That we're getting ready and we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Okay, so today is April 27th, 29th, 2020, and we are having a special meeting, Oregon City Commission, and I will call that meeting to order. And call the roll, please.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Denise McGriff is absent right now. Commissioner Rachel Lyle-Smith.
Here.
Mayor Dan Holliday.
Here. So we have, I don't have the agenda in front of me, so we've got two agenda items. The first one is the Oregon City Small Business Grant Program. Mr. Conkle, do you want to take that, or is that Mr. Graham?
Um, hold on, one, sorry, one sec. So Commissioner McGriff says she's waiting.
Oh, yep, she is.
Yes, yes. Okay, let the record reflect that Commissioner McGriff has joined the meeting. Um, go ahead, Mr. Conkle.
Uh, thank you. So tonight we're presenting the Coronavirus Economic Relief Response, Oregon City Business Debt Relief Program. Uh, the program is a $200,000 grant award program designed to provide financial aid for the community locally based small businesses and sole proprietors disrupted by COVID-19. Um, we discussed this at the April 15th Commission Meeting, um, and the commissioners asked for a couple of changes to be incorporated into the proposed program. And those were to expand the target businesses to include sole proprietors who live in and whose business is based in Oregon City. The numbers of employees up to 15 may include the owners, and the eligible uses have been expanded to include contract work conducted by a subcontractor under a 1099. Uh, these requested changes have been incorporated into the proposed Business Debt Relief Grant Program attached to the staff report that you received. So unless you want me to go further back into the background and some of the nuts and bolts of it, you probably recall that from the last meeting. Those were the changes that we had made that are presented before you tonight.
I'd like to make a suggestion. I think that rather than 3,000, the max amount should be 1,500 in order to be able to get out to a larger segment of the business community. We have substantially more than 65 small businesses that would qualify in Oregon City, and I'd be willing to hear comments about that. Rachel, Commissioner Lyle-Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I don't have any comments on the number. I'd be interested in hearing from maybe some of the public comment. My question was probably for Mr. Conkle and maybe Mr. Graham. If we approve this, can you give us an idea of the timeline of when would this, could this go into effect? Is it planned, what's your timeline going live tomorrow? Or assuming that we don't make big changes?
Sure, and I'll have Mr. Graham talk through what the implementation of this would be if it's approved.
Sure.
Uh, mic on.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, the, uh, the plan is that if it's approved tonight, the, uh, the, the package would be advertised online in the af- late afternoon on the 28th, the next day. And it would be on, it, it, and this will, we won't be accepting applications at that time. It's simply an advertising, it's a way of letting people know what to expect, what they should be pulling together in order to make application. So we're talking about the 28th, the 29th, and the 30th, um, and the 1st. The application will be online, uh, in a variety of sources and places, and people will have an opportunity to see what's what in terms of the application. Also, the application will be in Spanish in order to be inclusive and, uh, and equitable. And we will also plan to have hard copies outside of City Hall, anyone, for anyone during that period of time that I just mentioned that could come by and pick up, uh, an application, hard copy. It will go online hot on May 4th, that's Monday, and we will accept applications at that time at 9:00 in the morning.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Well, first, I'd like to compliment Mr. Graham and Mr. Conkle and any others who worked on putting this proposal together. It is far in a way well thought out, more than any other of the surrounding municipalities, and it's a job well done. I've spoken with Mr. Graham a number of times. He did add in the residency requirement, and I think that's something he just put out for discussion purposes, and I think we should talk about that because I suspect that many of our business operations are not residents, but they are contributors to our, our welfare. There was another component in there where it talked about paying off credit card debt or capital, and I think there were items like four and five. And I'm sorry to say, I don't want anybody running out and buying inventories at the belated date. I'd almost like to put existing debt as of such and such a date. And those are the only two things that I would throw out for discussion by the commission. But by and large, what an incredibly well-written program. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, unless one of the other commissioners has something to say right now, I want to start the, the public comment on this. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just gonna go down the list. Uh, Ben James, Elevate Financial.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name is Ben James. I reside in Willamette, West Lynn, but I do own two commercial properties in Oregon City, as well as run my business Elevate Wealth Advisors in Oregon City. Uh, I am also the current Chair of the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. Um, I've had one tenant already approached me asking for concessions on lease payments, and my suspicion is that this will not be the last. Our business used to draw people to Oregon City to have lunch or shop, uh, and we've transitioned to online and phone services, so I know we're not seeing the same amount of people in Oregon City. Finally, as a Chamber Board member, I can tell you that our membership renewals that we rely on have been down significantly, indicating that our members are either uncertain about their future or are already in a financial pinch. Um, and then lastly, I'll, I would comment that I, I think $3,000 would probably be more impactful, um, and more meaningful to businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Why did I lose my list? Oh, uh, Ladonna Cox.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Can.
Hi, so my name is Ladonna, and I own Geeks and Games Store here in Oregon City. I also live in Oregon City, too. Uh, first, I just want to thank everybody for just considering the idea of being able to help some of our local businesses. It's really great that we are all coming together in a time of need, and it makes me really proud to be able to have my business in Oregon City. That being said, we have applied for many different types of loans, grants, and all of that. Uh, we're doing our best to keep our store open. Unfortunately, we did have to lay off both employees and also not, um, not pay ourselves at this time. Uh, we're doing all the things that we can think of to be able to continue to run our business. Of course, uh, first and foremost is keeping everybody safe by maintaining the social distancing guidelines that were set forth. Um, but we're still seeing, at, at the very least, a 50% cut in sales. So online sales, curbside pickup, home delivery, doing whatever we can to be able to still help our customers stay at home and, um, but to be able to keep our business viable. So any amount of money at this time would be amazing to be able to use towards our business. Ultimately, we are still responsible to pay our rent. We are still responsible to pay our utilities. And, um, we know that the people that own our building that we lease from have bills as well. And so we want to make sure that we are supporting them through this crisis, too. And so being able to pay those types of things would be a nice gesture to let them know that we want to work with them and that we want them to work with us through the hard times and the, and the good times. So, thank you.
Hey, next up, Sheldon Penner.
Yes, good evening. My name is Sheldon Penner. I'm with Chris Cakes Northwest. We're, uh, do pancake catering. I'm also the past President of the Oregon City Board. Um, we have absolutely no business right now. Uh, we haven't had any since the first week of March, and all my events are now being canceled into June now already, middle of June. Um, I've just had two events canceled that were in June already. Fortunately, I have very low overhead and have built up a reserve before we started. So I, my business technically is not in Oregon City, but as a board member in the north of the Oregon City, I would love to see what we can do for all of the businesses in the area that can stay around so that when we do get back, we will have this, people to do business with.
Go ahead. Okay. Uh, Victoria Miney from the Chamber.
I, I just want to say thank you to everyone, to the commission especially, for their quick response and for doing this. As you know, it's one of those things, it's super heartfelt. I would love all of them to come back. I have no opposition in regards to the amounts. I know that because the program is set up to only pay one bill, um, a lot of those bills won't be for a full 3,000. Uh, a lot of them will pay maybe one month's rent or one payment of something. So that's something to consider, that already the benefit will hit probably more than the 66 or 67. Uh, but we're just grateful that the opportunity to help is there, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Baum.
Oh, good evening. Hello, good evening. Uh, my questions are, um, well, first, let me say, I appreciate the fact of having this meeting by Zoom. I love that, and, um, that you're open to this program. So a couple of questions I have is, is this gonna make an impact on the city budget? Because it's coming out of the general fund, and will it be in two years, you're gonna wanna have more money for the general fund? So that's one, one concern. The other is, um, that I think probably the, the sole provider, um, business should have a priority, I guess. And, um, because right now, there are a lot of grant programs out there for businesses that employ, um, that have employees. But if you're the only person that's working your business, there's like no unemployment for you, there's no, I mean, it's really hard to get any kind of grants. So then the other thing is, how are you gonna spread the word? Are you just gonna use the Downtown Association, Oregon City Chamber? Um, how are you gonna spread the word to the small businesses that right now have their doors closed and don't know about this meeting?
Did you come in late?
I must have.
Yeah, Mr. Graham explained that it's gonna be online for, uh, if we pass it today, the rest of the week, and it wouldn't open for applications until next Monday. Um, so it'll be, you know, I assume a full court press by city staff and Mr. Graham to get it out through every possible channel.
One other thing, Mr.
So is there any way you?
One other thing, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may. The other thing that we will, we will be doing to get the word out is that, uh, we will be making phone calls to all those businesses that are eligible, uh, and have a business license uh, during this period of observation so that people, so that people who don't use, uh, social media, I don't know who they would be, but if don't, don't use social media.
Well, you're right.
So we'll be able to, uh, know that the program exists and it's coming. But we will not be accepting applications until Monday, May 4th.
So, uh, Mr. Conkle, can you answer the commissioner's question about the money? And if we're gonna ask for more money next year?
So, you know, fortunately, through the years of the commission working on the budget, um, we've been able to set aside some funds. Um, we've been, we've been working with Mr. Parno and Mr. Graham. Uh, we've had some general fund positions that have not been filled in the current biennium. Uh, we saw property tax receipts come in, um, a little bit higher than what was budgeted. Uh, we've seen marijuana, uh, tax money come in a little bit higher than budgeted. So really, it's, it was an effort of looking across multiple line items within the budget to see where they at, where they were projected to be and what they were adopted as relative to what the existing funds that have come in. And, and so it wasn't taken from one line item. This was looking across multiple line items within the city to come up with the proposed program of $200,000. Uh, so that, that, that was, that was how we got to where we're at today. Um, I think as, as information becomes in as to, you know, what we've been seeing in utility billing, you know, we'll get a good idea as, as we get through this month and, you know, towards the end of May to see what type of, uh, uh, payments that we're seeing relative to, um, what we've historically seen. We have not received a lot of calls requesting deferrals, um, at the utility billing department. Obviously, there's gonna be potentially an impact on gas taxes that are coming in, you know, some of those larger ones. But until we have that, that known, um, i- it's hard to say what the future budgets are gonna be looking like. Fortunately, we are in a two-year budget cycle. This is our, this is our first year, um, and we have an approved budget to work within. Um, and, and really, any, any, any decisions, as always, as you know, as being on the budget committee are, you know, how do we work within the means that we have available to us? Will this impact potentially some project that we would like to do in the future? Or would not have enough of the funds available to do the complete list of goals or objectives that, that the commission would like to do? You know, those are discussions we would have to have in the future. But at this time, we think that, you know, from the, from the revenues that we've put together, this does allow us to continue to do what we've adopted within the budget to do, um, and still provide these funds, uh, immediately right now.
The answer to your question, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. Can I ask one more question? And that is, um, is it gonna be first come, first served? So everybody has to file like right away at that 8 o'clock hour or something?
Yes, it'll be first come, first served. And, uh, in order to make it equitable, it'll be in English and in Spanish, and it will also be, uh, on, online for a number of days so that people understand it's there and what's required of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is that everybody, uh, that wanted to talk, Katie?
Yes, that's everyone.
Okay, Commissioner Lyle-Smith.
Thank you. Um, so to follow up on what, um, Commissioner Baum was asking, so tell, tell me, how are the applications actually submitted? Is it all online?
Uh, no, uh, they, individuals have two ways of doing this, or businesses have two ways of doing this. Online as well as hard copy. They can bring a hard copy in. Now, a com- a complete application is not only the application, but a signed application along with all the necessary attachments. That's a complete application.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Well, not knowing the full number of potential applicants and never having heard the actual number of businesses in town, and realizing that, and that we've extended it to sole proprietorships, so we're even talking about people like hairdressers that are renting a chair in that facility in town. Um, I, I think I, the items I would like to discuss, bantered about by this commission, are in fact the, the award amount, as mentioned by the mayor. And I do want to talk about a cutoff date for existing liabilities to these businesses. And I'm sorry, I, what I don't want is anybody using the funds to go buy inventories. And that's just a discussion item. People can tend to disagree with me on that if they, they so wish. And so it'd be, uh, liabilities as of a specific date. And maybe Mr. Graham would have a suggestion in the avenue.
Well, I would.
So I think there's some discussion to be had.
Mr. Graham, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if, uh, I think, uh, Mr. O'Donnell is speaking about the credit card balance obligation. So I would suggest, since the executive, since the, since the governor provided her executive order on, uh, March 23rd, all the debt in regard, in, in relationship to the, or in regard to the credit card should be March 23rd, anything prior to March 23rd, March 23rd and before. Uh, that would, that would be a reasonable cutoff date.
And, and recurring debt. You know, like the monthly debts. And maybe you don't want to make it that complicated.
Yeah, that would be a bit of much. I would, I would suggest that we keep it at the, uh, the credit cards.
Okay. And also discussion on the residency, uh, um, piece that we, was added in among the commissioners, please.
Okay, I, you know, I really have a hard time with residency because the fact is, is that, you know, like, we have our business in Camby because doing business and doing politics in the same city is a bad idea. So, uh, I, I can't, I can't see that being a limiting factor. I can see saying that folks had to have had an active business license prior to the governor's, uh, order.
I agree with you, too, Mayor.
Anybody else? Uh, Commissioner McGriff.
Yes, thank you. I'm, um, I can see you on video, but I don't have you on audio, so you're on audio on my phone. Um, I, um, agree with, uh, what you're saying, uh, Mayor Holliday. I, I believe that what we're doing is that we are dealing with small businesses. We are not dealing with individuals. And as many of you know, um, many of the small businesses have not been able to apply for any of the federal programs because it doesn't apply to them, and they're either insufficient or inaccessible. So I think our program can be a, a tool to help bring these small businesses back alive, since some of them are a little bit dead now. But I agree with the, uh, that the residency does not really, um, concern me. I'm concerned about the business being in Oregon City. I'm concerned with them being, uh, meeting all the other criteria that Mr. Graham has so aptly put together. And, uh, I would even say, you know, he's suggesting, I believe, uh, one year that they have a business license, and I think that that's, uh, reasonable. If we wanted to make it more, uh, that they have a business that's been in business for at least the last two to three years is fine. Uh, but, uh, again, we're loaning to the, we're giving the grant to the business, not the person.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Best, have you got any forward?
No, I, I agree with the comment about the residency. Um, and I'm open to talking about the, um, grant amount. Both of those are topics that I'm, I'm okay with.
Okay, well, I think we've dispensed with the residency requirement. Do I have a head shake there?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't we go ahead and have a discussion about the grant amount? Who wants to start? Commissioner Smith?
Um, I, I'm open to it either way, but I think, um, leaving it at the 3,000. 3,000 is not a huge amount for a business that is really struggling. And if we know that, um, the likelihood that every business is gonna reach that level with one, uh, individual bill, I think I, there's flexibility in there that I'm fine with it the way it is, but I'm open to other thoughts.
Anybody else? Commissioner Lyle-Smith?
Yes, um, I would, uh, agree with Commissioner Smith, um, based on, you know, public comment that we see from, um, Mrs. Manning. Um, I, I, I see there's flexibility built in. I can't imagine everybody's rent, for example, will be 3,000. And so, um, the higher amount gives some flexibility, and, and I have some comfort in knowing that not everybody will be spending the whole 3,000 since there's the line item that it's only for one, um, one item. So I think there's some restrictions built in that gives us some flexibility.
All right, Commissioner McGriff?
Yes, I would concur. I think the way it's worded, it says "up to." It doesn't say you get 3,000, it says "up to." So I'm, I'm okay with that.
All right, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm okay with it for the same reasons, up to $3,000.
Is there any other further discussion on this item, or is there a motion?
Could we, I'm sorry.
I'd like to move that we adopt the, uh, program as amended, uh, removing the residency requirement.
Would you, uh, what's about the discussion about existing debt as of a cutoff date?
Right, yep, thank you.
Uh, and existing, yeah. We can add that in as of March 23rd, as per Mr. Graham's recommendation.
Yes, the credit card.
Okay.
Mr. Manor, should you have something?
That was gonna be my question. That was the third question that was out there was, so that we're, it's gonna be credit card debt prior to March 23rd, 2020 is eligible.
Right, okay, so do we have a second?
Yes, I have a second.
Okay, so moved by Commissioner McGriff, second by Commissioner Smith, uh, Lyle-Smith. Uh, call roll, please.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle-Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner, or, sorry, Mayor Dan Holliday.
Aye, motion carried. All right, we'll move on to the second item. Uh, who's taking this, Mr. Conkle?
Uh, I am, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, tonight, uh, presenting before you a proposal for temporary shower trailer at Father's Heart in Oregon City. The current event that we're going through has severely impacted the social services available to the homeless community throughout the state region and within Oregon City. Uh, the importance of personal hygiene has been identified as a necessary and effective method to reduce the spread of the virus. As social service facilities and resources have been reduced during this event, the provision of clean, safe, and accessible shower facilities has been identified a need, uh, within the homeless community, and something that needs to be addressed across the county, including Oregon City. The Father's Heart facility on Washington Street has been identified as a potential location to locate a shower trailer two days a week in conjunction with additional resources currently being provided at that facility. This shower facility would be managed by Father's Heart staff while onsite and in operation. Um, so this is a, a mobile shower, uh, trailer. Um, it's currently at the Clackamas Service Center, providing that amenity there, uh, working in concert with the other jurisdictions and the Clackamas County Emergency Operations Center. Father's Heart was identified as a potential opportunity to bring that trailer in, uh, for two days a week during the hours of operations that Father's Heart is open, um, to provide that service. The cost to the property owner in, in this case is, the, the trailer does need to be hooked up to, to water. And then it does need to be able to discharge into an approved sanitary sewer location, which, uh, this facility would be able to provide. Uh, it would be managed by a Father's Heart employee or volunteer. Um, clothes, towels, laundry services would be provided, um, in conjunction with the trailer, as well as after each, each, each usage of a shower facility, it would be completely cleaned out and disinfected before, uh, someone else would come in and use one of those, uh, shower facilities. Um, I, as well as the, the commission, um, are extremely sensitive to the impacts on the existing residential neighborhood around, uh, this facility. Um, I do believe that there would be opportunities to work with, um, to work with, trying to put in some measures to limit the impact, make sure social distancing, physical distancing requirements are met, uh, to try to provide this service without impacting, um, creating a greater impact, um, within the, within the neighborhood and the community. Um, I did ask, and appreciate Nancy Bush from, uh, Clackamas County to participate as well, to provide a little bit of information and help with any questions, uh, that the commissioners may have.
Nancy Bush, welcome.
Thank you very much. Do you have questions for me, or?
Oh, I thought, I, I had the impression you had some bit of a presentation to make.
Well, no, actually, um, the city manager, uh, Conkle, actually, pretty much.
Saw your thunder?
It pretty much covered everything.
Okay, well, I have a question for Mr. Conkle.
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Conkle, so it's my understanding that Father's Heart is not actually even open at this time. They are just handing out sandwiches, and, uh, they're doing that through a doorway because they're not allowing anyone on, uh, into their facility. So I'm not really understanding how this would possibly work. And also, have they granted permission for this? Because they would refuse to have the portable toilet on their site, which then was placed on the sidewalk, which then created massive problems for the neighbors around there, and it was removed at their request. So I'm not, I'm not feeling that. around there. And it was removed at their request. So I'm not, I'm not feeling that confident that this is, um, a viable location.
And so I guess when I think about-
I have a good question too. Mr. Conkle, are we not currently setting up to allow the homeless to use the showers at the pool, um, in the mornings?
So, um, so I'll answer the mayor's first, question first. Yes, we are cour-, we are, we're in conversations with, um, Clackamas County about utilizing the showers at the pool. Yes, we are. Um, and that's a program that we've had in place, um, from six to eight AM when the, when the pools open, pre-COVID event for the homeless community to come in and utilize that facility. Um, as to Ms. Commissioner McGriff's, um, question, I guess in the, in the new era of, of COVID, I, I, I consider handing stuff out through the door as being open. Um, you're right. We cannot, because of physical distancing requirements, coming into the facility itself is not occurring, but they are handing resources out through doorways to maintain physical distancing.
Okay. Commissioner O'Dell?
Just, I'll probably defer my comments, but just for purposes of clarity to each of us and to the viewers at home, the Clackamas Service Center is located where?
It's off of Eighty Second and, uh, I'm sorry, I dr-, it's in Portland, off of Eighty Second Drive.
Okay, okay. I suppose I could launch in the rest of the discussion. I mean, I, I feel that this city, Oregon City, has done its share and more of tending to the homeless. I'm not sure if you can document the reduction in services because of COVID. And I'm not going to challenge that statement. Uh, I also feel that the McLaughlin neighborhood has done its share and more. So I, none of the three choices are approve, deny, or encourage further conversation. And I don't know if that conversation, maybe you can clarify for me, Mr. Conkle, is that about another location within Oregon City or other communities of similar size to Oregon City providing this service? Because are they providing this service also or is Oregon City the sole provider?
Uh, would you like for me to answer that?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, because, yeah, here's the emergency operations center. The, um, uh, the service center is providing the service once a week and the city of Moala is also, we just worked with them today, and they're going to be providing the service also once a week. Um, and to some of the other questions that I've heard, we are working with Father's Heart. Um, and they are willing to do this. So we have worked out with them, if you all agree. Um, I think that, uh, the city manager mentioned that, you know, we will have towels. Um, they, the population would get, um, information the day before that there's going to be laundry done. So they'll be prepared for that, knowing that they need to bring clothes. They're going to get some clean undergarments, um, toothbrush, toothpaste, um, some of those things too as, um, as they come out. Um, and it would be onsite. We were looking here at Father's Heart because that's where the population is and that is where they're used to being served. And as you know, the, the, someone mentioned they, you can't go into the facility where they usually do get showers, um, which is why we were looking for this place. And, um, I know that there was some discussion about using the pool and I will let city manager Conkle talk about that too, but my understanding is it wasn't being used very frequently. Um, and I'm not sure about that. I think it may be the hours or something, but that was probably what we wanted to put in at Father's Heart as well.
I have a, a question for Ms. Bush.
Go ahead.
Is this service being provided in any other surrounding communities such as Milwaukee or Lake Oswego, Westland?
Um, not in West, no. We, right now, we have, we're hoping to have it in Oregon City. We are looking at, we're hoping to put something in Gladstone. So we're looking at Gladstone. Hopefully Moala is opening one and they'll be using the same trailer that will hopefully be used at Father's Heart, Oregon City and the, uh, Clackamas Service Center.
So there is no demand for this same type of service in any of the cities I mentioned?
No, there is, no, there is not.
Commissioner Lyle Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm, I'm asking about the timeline. There's a line in the staff report that says the trailer will be brought to the property until such time that the social service providers that provided shower facilities pre-COVID nineteen are available again. So I'm wondering, um, who are those providers? Um, and, and I'm a little uncomfortable with this indefinite, um, timeline. So I'd, I'd like to know who the providers are and then I'd like maybe for the commission to consider maybe this is something that we put an end date on and re, re, revisit or see how it's going at later date.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, yeah, for, in this case, the provider is Father's Heart. The normal provider is Pro-, Father's Heart.
So they have shower facilities at Father's Heart?
They do.
Okay.
So this would be just a temporary, until they're able to reopen their normal facility.
That is correct.
Chief Band, you got any?
Yes, I, I, um, I have some additional comments if I may, please.
Go ahead.
Um, I, uh, since this came out in, uh, the agenda, I have received no less than two dozen phone calls plus emails from the residents who live around this facility. So what I am going to relay to you, uh, is their concern is that, number one, many of the residents there feel that Father's Heart has not been adequately operating or policing their facility. So they're not, they're concerned about how they would be able to operate the shower outside. Residents are also concerned about the number of people that still continue to loiter at the site, which again, doesn't have anything, is related to the showers. But the, um, the issue that they're having is that, uh, they feel like they weren't notified. They feel that, um, the organization has not really been addressing their needs and concerns. And they see that this is just one more nail in what they call the proverbial coffin of the impact that they have received. And this is residences on Washington, John Adams, Twelve, and going beyond to Jefferson where there's a lot of, been a lot of problems. Matter of fact, one of the residents informed me that just yesterday someone knocked on their door at two AM wanting to know why Father's Heart wasn't open and where they could get food and a shower. So this is, this has been continually going on. So I, I, needless to say, I'm compassionate and understand that they have been giving showers and doing that and at the pool. But they, um, the folks that live right there and that are impacted are really, really concerned and really stressed out about this. So I'm just relaying that to all of you.
Okay. Chief Band?
Um, so I get uncomfortable whenever we talk about homelessness because I, I'm compassionate about homeless people and, and to say homeless people, again, they are also very different and they all have various stories. Um, uh, but I also feel like my job is to reflect to, to, to a lot of a degree what the community says to me all the time. And, um, and, and so some of that is fueling some of what I'm going to say right now. Um, and some other folks get some of the emails. I know the mayor gets some of the emails that I get of people who are very frustrated. Um, the, the, there's some challenges. I, I, I am convinced over several years of dealing with homeless issues that if you build it, they will come. Um, there's just, that is absolute, an absolute fact, um, in, in my mind that the, the more services we provide, the more folks we're going to have showing up here. That doesn't mean that they don't need the services, but I feel like our community is always the one doing more. The, the challenges right now for us, uh, I don't want to speak too much of it, but you got to do quite a bit to get arrested these days. Um, the jail has, I, I think it's been, um, in the news, so I don't think it's a secret, but the, the jails are obviously very challenged. And this isn't, the majority of homeless folks don't end up in jail. But when you start giving homeless folks more reasons to come here, the small percentage that cause havoc in these neighborhoods, uh, our ability to deal with them is, is diminished as it's ever been. In addition to the problems with the jail, the detox facility, Hooper, that's been open for years, shut down inside of the last year. And so we've been very challenged and, um, in times of COVID, because of the two things I just mentioned, one of the trends we've been seeing is folks going to the hospital because people in other cities don't know what else to do with people. And it's, it's created quite a problem for us. Um, I, um, you know, the location, um, it's, you know, Father's Heart i- i- is probably, um, if, if, if they're, if anyone's going to stab it, they would, they're better at this than just about anybody. They do really do a good job for the homeless community. Um, it seems like, um, they could through some sort of action. I, I, I know they don't want to let people in, but if they follow the social distancing, let somebody in there and shower, could this be in a location that wouldn't impact folks, um, to the same degree? That creates a lot of problems. Um, I think I probably talked more than I should.
All right. Um, Commissioner Lyle Smith, do you have something to say? Go ahead.
See my pondering on my face. Um, so, so if Father's Heart was providing showers before, I don't really feel like we're adding a new, a new service. This, so, you know, in that, in that sense, not to be argumentative, argumentative, which you've been, but the, you know, this, I agree with you. If we build it, they will come. However, I feel like it's already been built. We're already providing shower services and, and therefore this is just filling a gap of something that got closed. At least that's my understanding. Um, but I, I do share the concerns. I'm, I'm wondering, have you looked at any other places and has the county considered maybe their property up on the top of the hill?
Oh, we don't have adequate, um, drainage or something. There are some issues with our property at top of the hill because of some drainage issues. And also this is not where the population is. Um, we were trying to, one of the things we're trying to do, um, is keep the population, um, in that community where they are. Like, we're not trying to move people around very much because of COVID and other infectious diseases. Uh, but we did consider that. It, we ran into a lot of issues around that as well.
Are there any other city properties in that general area that be considered that would not, in, keep them in the same area, but maybe give the people around Father's Heart a little bit of a break?
And I, I don't have the answer to that question.
Yeah, you know, when we thought about it a little bit, you know, so you've got to have, uh, an adequate water supply, uh, a sewer connection. Um, the other component of it was like we had looked at, you know, maybe John Storm Park, maybe Clackamas Park, where we know we have significant populations of homeless. Um, you know, how to, how to man that faci-, how to, how to, how to staff that facility. So this is being done with Father's Heart staff. Um, they're there onsite. Um, I, I don't have the ability to put staff into that situation, um, if we were to put it at another location. So I was really trying to consolidate around where the existing service was as well as the other services that are being provided, um, out of, out of that facility so that it was, you know, trying to localize and minimize travel from, you know, throughout the community. Um, it, it's going to happen, you know, I think-
Let me ask you this, let me ask you this, Tony. Um, if we did it down at, uh, at Clackamas Park, why couldn't we get the folks from the Homeless Solutions Coalition in Clackamas County to staff that thing? They've been meeting for years and not getting a whole lot done. Um, maybe they could staff that up.
It would be something I could look into.
I am not at all, I'm not at all in support of putting this at, at Father's Heart at this time. Commissioner McGriff?
Yes, um, the one thing that also is lacking in this is that we have no operational plan. You don't know how many days a week. We don't know what the hours are. I, I'm again unwilling to have this sort of be carte blanche. I, I just, there's just not enough information here. I'm, I just, again, that's another concern I have and I haven't heard anything about what that would be.
Commissioner Smith? Sorry. Go ahead.
I was supposed to make, is it, may I respond to that? Actually, we do have an operational plan, um, which includes that the days right now would be Thursday and Fridays and the, the trailer would be onsite from ten AM to two thirty and showers would happen from eleven to two. And we do have an operational plan, um, which I think, I was, I was looking through your paperwork. I think there's a lot of that that is in, um, your paperwork, but I can share with you what we do have. That is part of the operational plan, which, which includes staffing, uh, social distancing, towels, how they clean the showers and those types of things. We have all of that.
So why two days a week and only one day a week at your facility, at the one in, on Eighty Second?
So I, well, and one of the things I, I had my hand raised and I was going to say, if we, if you would rather, we could look at doing it one day a week here as well and see how it goes, uh, for two to three weeks. But I don't know if that's something you would consider. Um, and my understanding, the reason why it's only one day a week at Clackamas is because there is a larger population here.
Commissioner Smith?
That's a, um, a lot of comments. So first of all, um, I, I, I don't want to downplay the comments made by, um, the police chief because I fully agree with some of the, with a lot of that, uh, those feelings. Um, Commissioner McGriff brought up a couple of points and, and concerns about phone calls and neighbors. I live in the same neighborhood. I live about six blocks away, um, from this site. Um, but I have mixed feelings about some of the comments made about whether or not it makes sense to keep it there. I agree with Commissioner Lyle Smith that this isn't really building something new. We're just continuing to kind of add a service that is replacing what is closed in the building. Um, and Commissioner McGriff's comment about, about some of the problems being that the, um, homeless population not knowing what the hours and services are is going to be semi-resolved by having more services there, um, where, uh, two days a week, they know that there's a shower there and they're already knowing to go there anyway. Um, by moving it to another location, you have to deal with the staffing issue and you have to deal with how to somehow communicate that we've changed it to a different place, confusing people even more. So I'm trying to juggle both of those. Um, you know, so I, I, I don't see, um, I, I think part of, um, keeping it there actually helps us a little bit. Um, but I don't downplay the rest of the comments and concerns because I think they're valid. So, um, you know, maybe, maybe starting it one day a week is a, is a, is a middle ground. I'm not sure.
Commissioner O'Dell?
Well, first a question for Nancy Bush. She talked about offering laundry services at the same time. Is that portable laundry services or are they laundry services that already exist within the Father's Heart?
So it is laundry services. I need to look at that real quick, sorry.
Love one.
Father's Heart staff and volunteers will do laundry onsite where the supply is provided by the emergency operations center from here will be stored between uses.
Okay. And then my further comments are quite a few and there's always a risk of being criticized as being heartless, which I'm not. But there's many things going on here. The Chief Band's comments are actually quite telling. And, and we do have the ability to offer shower services at Fa-, Father's Heart, maintaining social distancing. In fact, we're going to do the laundry internal to Father's Heart. And the fact that yes, this is where the po-, population is concentrated and it becomes a self fulfilling prophecy because, but honestly, I feel like it's always, Oregon City is the go-to destination. And I'd like to share the commitment to this homeless community among others. And we seem to be the easy solution. Just go back to Oregon City. Well, there's other communities and, and like I said, it's self sustaining. If every service is offered in Oregon City, the community will continue to grow and then every additional service will be in Oregon City. So I'd like to see some dispersion of services. Um, I'm all for servicing that, that community and I believe in, you know, the integrity of man. But I mean, I also have a commitment to this community. And as I said, I think Oregon City and specifically the McLaughlin neighborhood has even more than its share. And I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Mayor?
Who was that?
That was Jim.
Who?
It was me, Mayor.
Oh, Chief Band, go ahead.
So just, just a couple of little things to say and, and not, just throwing everything on the table. So just because of how this will, the one difference in it that is going- on the table. So just because of how this will, the one difference in it that is going to be here is, in the past, when people were going to shower at Father's Heart, they would go inside the building and wait until they had, it was their time to shower. They're, they're in there, they're occupied, they're watching TV, they're doing other things, getting a haircut. This is going to be people waiting in the parking lot, i.e. waiting in the neighborhood, uh, which is going to look a lot different than what things look like right now.
Yeah.
One other thing, just for point of clarification, that has been happening in our city is, there's been a huge shift. And if you want to see evidence of that shift, every time you drive down Beaver Creek Road between Moala and 213, count grocery carts, and you will see the numbers go, I've seen them as high as thirty, and I've seen them as low as maybe six or seven. There has been a big shift as we have, uh, been enforcing more rules down, uh, in what was the, um, the Cove area. Uh, there's a lot more folks that have been in that metro property, in the canyon, and then on the other side of 213, and you'll see, uh, shopping carts there. The, the presence of the homeless community is, is still downtown in that core, but there has also been a big shift, and there's a lot of folks up there. There's a lot more homeless people on top of the hill than there has ever been in the past.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could, real quick, um, I don't think I need to go, you know, remind everybody that, that when the homeless point in time count was done, Oregon City, um, had more homeless folks, homeless citizens than the rest of the county combined. Um, the discussion about how to disperse it through other communities, I, I fully understand, and we've had those discussions, and fully understand that. Um, the, you know, in this situation, um, we're dealing with a population that does not have the ability to go into a shelter, into a home, and isolate for the next six weeks. Um, the, the only thing that they have available, and it's been identified as one of the goals of the governor's, is personal hygiene. That includes washing hands, washing the body, and clean clothes. Um, whether we like that or not, whether we provide this shower facility or not, this population will be here, and, um, we will, we will deal with it, uh, whether that's through it spreading through the homeless community, who also uses our, our, our grocery stores. Um, so this is, you know, could there be a possibility of starting it with one day a week? Um, you know, we will revisit this and bring it back to the commission for a status update in six weeks, so that we can get six opportunities under it. My understanding is that the, um, I'm sorry, I've drawn a blank. Uh, the, the Clackamas Service Center was seeing between ten to fifteen people a day, um, in that population, uh, utilizing that, that service. Um, so just, I understand the frustration, and I understand the impacts, and those are long-term, those need long-term solutions. Um, and we have an immediate impact right now that, that we know through lack of hygiene, um, the inability to test and no vaccine, um, this is a target-high population for the continued spread, uh, of this virus. Um, and I don't know how much showers will help, uh, but it, it is one of the things that's been identified as a way to reduce spread, is proper hygiene.
Commissioner McGriff?
Thank you. Um, yes, Mr. Conkle, I do understand that, and I totally sympathize. But I think the point that I was trying to get across has already been made, that this is a little bit different situation with, again, people are not queuing inside the building. They'll be queuing outside the building. I think that I can't support it at this time without going back to our, our c- community and getting some feedback, because we did not get an operational plan, we did not get any of that information about how it would work, and it seems to me we're being asked to kind of sign a blank check, and I don't feel comfortable with that, especially with the, uh, outreach that has been given to me from the community members. So I would like to suggest that, um, we need to get back out to folks, and if we want to try it one day a week, I think that I need to get back to people in this community and ask them how do they feel about that, and get some opinion and bring that back to my fellow commissioners, and then we can make a decision. But I think without any details, I, I don't feel comfortable. You've told us what that is, but I want to see it in writing, and I wish we'd gotten that along with the commission report.
Commissioner Lyle Smith?
Thank you. Um, can we revisit the idea of perhaps using the pool as a location where folks, it's a large enough building where folks could socially distance and use spread them out, and, um, you know, that would allow folks that were waiting in line to wait inside a building and use a city facility and take it a little bit away from the Father's Heart location?
Well, yeah, I think we're, I think we're missing the bigger point, and that is, is that, uh, why can't Father's Heart still do this inside? Just queue the people up, you know, and give them a time slot, tell them to come back in, you know, half an hour or twenty minutes, and you cycle those people through inside the building.
I, I don't, I don't have an answer for you. At the pool, you know, we're trying to keep, you know, more than, no, no more than ten people congregating, uh, in a location, in a, in a building, in a conference room, you know, in the chamber here. Um, you know, I think that would probably be your limiting factor.
Okay.
And may I-
Well, go ahead, Mr.-
I'm sorry, Mayor, may I, yeah. So, and I have only been in, like, the very front of the building when I've dropped off, um, some donations, but I think that building too is quite tight. Um, I think the, the hallways are very narrow, and I think from what I understand, it's really difficult to do any kind of social distancing in that. Um, and I think even if we did use the inside of the building, I, I need to tell you that I think you would still have people lining up outside, which is also, I think, part of this discussion. Um, so that's also something I just want you to be aware of. If we do decide to do that, or you, that's what we like to do, I think you still will have people lining up outside. Thank you.
Okay, well, we've had this discussion pretty well discussed at this point, so does somebody want to make a motion? Commissioner Lyle Smith? Your hand is up.
That's only because I haven't taken it back down.
Uh, Commissioner O'Dell?
I'll simply say that I have toured that facility, and I think it's possible to accomplish social distancing. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, well, I, I am not in support of this at this time. I, I agree with Commissioner McGriff that, um, we haven't done enough work talking to the folks in the McLaughlin neighborhood that are impacted directly. Um, and I don't think we've fully vetted out other possible options, uh, about taking care of this kind of service. So if somebody wants to make a motion, or, you know, if you want to table it, I, I don't really care, but let's get it off the agenda.
I'd like to move that we table this to our next meeting, and we get additional information and, uh, be able to do some outreach to our community about what the impacts of this may be, and see if we can come to some sort of compromise.
Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, motion to table is not debatable. Call the roll.
Commissioner Rocky Smith? Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyle Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Mr. Conkle, you have anything further for us?
I just wanted to follow up a little bit on clarification on that motion that was just made. While we can probably certainly get you the operational plan, and if I work with Ms. Bush, um, you know, our commission, our next meeting is May sixth. Um, the commission reports are due on Wednesday of this week. Um, I, I won't be able to do significant public outreach, uh, to the McLaughlin neighborhood before May sixth. Um, but we can bring back the operational plan, uh, with a, with a revised staff report.
Commissioner McGriff, can you, um, could you be the conduit here for the McLaughlin neighborhood to talk to those folks?
Yes, I can, um, I can ask our neighborhood chair to do an e-blast with some information that I get from Mr. Conkle, and then there are other ways to get information out that I would be happy to pursue.
Okay. Well, let's proceed that way then, Mr. Conkle.
Uh, thank you.
Uh, you have anything else for us?
Not tonight, no, sir.
Thank you, Nancy.
Then we're adjourned. Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.